Good evening and welcome to the December 18, 2023, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I'd like to introduce our staff. We have Mr. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney, Michael Garner, Acting City Engineer, Zach Pons, Director of Planning, Haley Webb, Development Review Coordinator, Lilly McIntyre, Special Projects Coordinator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I would ask the commission members to introduce themselves and state their occupation. Beginning, Mr. Rumsey.
Stephen Rumsey, business owner.
Dana Prince, attorney.
Vince Dooley, Design Coordinator for the UA.
Tim Harrison, General Contractor.
Ann Hornsby, attorney.
Eddie Pugh, retired.
John Smith, Deputy Director of Environmental Services.
Bill Wright, Business Owner. There are sign up sheets outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of the petition, and four are allowed to speak in opposition of the petition. All speakers will be having a maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. The commission will take up items in order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property, such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, we'll then call on any other party in order of sign up or otherwise who opposes, who poses desires to oppose the petition or support the petition, and call up and order those at that point. When it's your turn for comment, please introduce yourself by stating your name and address for the record to the commission to provide your remarks. Any written comments have been included into the record. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to the objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your time. Once commission members are satisfied they have received all relevant information, we'll then close pro discussion to the pub, at that which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments may be at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually are video recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction. In all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and its planning jurisdiction, and as to amendments, planned unit developments, and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decision is subject to appeal to the City Council. As to all remaining agenda matters, including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approval requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. This time, I would ask to any members of the commission to have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before us tonight. If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, I would ask staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to matters before the commission tonight.
It has. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll begin with the approval of the minutes. As to the Planning and Zoning Commission has received the synopsis of the November 2023 meeting, I move that we dispense with a reading of the minutes of the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. Okay? All those who approve of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, minutes are approved. Okay. We have the one consent agenda item. Does staff need to come and give us anything on the consent agenda? Okay. We have one consent agenda item no one has signed up for or against. It is S-8723, the Spardon Plaza. Again, consent agenda item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Happy last meeting of the year. We do have two cases that are requesting to continue. I do not have that slide in front of you. I do not see the petitioner here to request that continuance. We did receive that request via email as well, so you all are able to make that vote.
Okay. Both cases are to the one petitioner.
For the PUD and the PUD subdivision.
Correct. Okay. Commission before us, we have a continuous request for P-0523 and PS-8623. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right. Starting out, we have our first companion case. It will have an annexation, rezoning, and subdivision. Starting with that annexation, we have AN-1923. This is to annex approximately 3.3 acres. It's located at 9601 Highway 69 South. Here's that vicinity map. Shaded in the yellow are the existing city limits. This is just north of the Hinton Place neighborhood. Here's that area outlined again, and an aerial view of that property. The applicant is requesting to annex in and rezone for a commercial development. This was outlined as a primary expansion area in framework, and there were no issues with city departments on this request. ESD did state that services will not be provided here. Jumping into that rezoning, we have Graves Watkins, Z-2223, petitioning to rezone that 3.3 acres from what would be R1 to BN. Whenever you annex in property, it comes in automatically as R1, which is residential. So they'd like to rezone that to BN, which is our neighborhood commercial. Again, this is the vicinity map, aerial, and the existing zoning there across the street, across Highway 69 South from BH zoning, which is our business highway. Here is that land, and across the street is the Windixy Shopping Center and the Hinton Place neighborhood directly south. Again, this is for access to city utilities for a commercial development, and here is a site plan of what that could look like. And just a few slides, this is tied to a subdivision. They'll be requesting to do three lots. It's one today, the front two, they're showing as a potential fast food, and then three towards the rear, a potential strip. This will be in line with the May Hinton existing street, so they'll be following that in line. They'll have one access off of 69 South. This does conform to framework. Framework identified this as corridor commercial, which primarily focuses on retail for a car-oriented pattern, which would be like a drive-through. And that future land use character map showing corridor commercial throughout. And here are those permitted uses within the BN zoning district. Any questions on the rezoning before we get to the subdivision? All right. We have S-8423, Watkins subdivision. This is consisting of three lots, again, on the 3.3 acres at 9601 Highway 69 South. We are in the same location, and we're going from one to three lots. Here's that plat with contours and the plat without. They are requesting one variance with the subdivision. They're requesting a variance from lot configuration. That lot three towards, on the right-hand side of your screen, they're creating a flaglot shape to have that street frontage, which will connect with their one access from 69 South. So it'll follow this pattern. We did receive three emails in opposition to these requests. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering on the lot, on the variance request for lot configuration?
Engineering doesn't have an issue. I think planning is also in concurrence with that arrangement.
Yeah, we went back and forth on this a little bit. They initially had a plat that had no street frontage for lot three, and street frontage to us was more important at that time.
I'm just more concerned about thinking about how we are going to be connecting on to May Hinton and into 69, and it looks like the sketch here, the roading is kind of not your standard.
So if development occurs on this property, they will be required to have an ALDOT permit for the access, which I'm pretty certain ALDOT will also require them to remove that entrance on the south that you see at the southwest corner of lot two. And thirdly, any LDP application to our office will require traffic study.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Petitioner.
Philip Grammer, Longleaf Engineering, 43265th Street, Tuscaloosa. I'm here representing the applicant, Graves Watkins, tonight. The presentation by staff, I think, was very thorough about what we're trying to get accomplished here. I did want to point out about traffic, and Mike mentioned about traffic survey LDP. We're getting a traffic study underway now to see what changes, improvements will be needed at that intersection to account for the traffic that will be coming in and out of those businesses. But yeah, that is an ALDOT intersection, and so we'll be getting ALDOT, doing all the permitting through ALDOT that's necessary to make that work. I don't know if I have anything else to add beyond what they've already mentioned, but if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Do you know what businesses you anticipate locating there?
I don't know. I've heard some speculation of, but I think there's, I think they're in talks now about what possibly could be there. I've been told fast food was the most recent, but I can see maybe if we find out anything more specific right now.
Do you know if that, I mean, it's showing here that that existing driveway there to the, I guess it would be to the south, is that definitely going to be removed?
Yes, with the entrance shown where it is, the existing driveway that is there on the south corner would be fully removed.
Okay.
That's right.
I mean, I guess the concern there, I think some of the people in opposition were obviously concerned about buffering.
Sure.
From the, I guess, that southern boundary there.
No, lot two and three would be abutting against those lots to the south there. The city does have the ordinances requiring certain buffers, you know, different configurations, and, you know, plan, of course, would be to totally comply with those buffers. But yeah, the driveway at that corner would not be used. The access for lot two would come from the north, and for lot three would come from the northwest.
Most of the, a lot of the concerns we had was the buffer. What are your plans for buffering that?
I believe to meet the city's ordinance, I think they have a couple options. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if we had settled on exactly what would be the best, but I think there was a one that requires a fence and a 20-foot buffer.
Yeah, so you've got three options. You've got 35 feet just outright. You've got 15 feet with an opaque wall, and then you have 10 feet with a parking lot in between. So it's one of those three options that they could choose from depending on how they, you know, orient their site, and as they get out there and start actually designing the site.
Yeah, I think the 15 feet with the wall, there's a bit of a slope on the south edge that kind of drops those lots down from the neighborhood, and so we wanted to kind of configure that in a way that made sense. I don't feel like it would make sense to put that wall right at the bottom of the slope, you know, but depending on how the grading worked out, if, assuming we can get that wall in the right configuration to give the maximum barrier from the, between the two developments, that's the plan.
So you're saying you're going to use the 15-foot with the wall?
That, like, I don't, I can't say specifically that, but yeah, I think that's where we would be leaning and favoring would be the 15 feet with the wall.
So it's the developer's option, not the Planning and Zoning Commission's?
That's right. They've got a few options to meet the buffer standards in the zoning ordinance.
Well, you know, what you're going to hear from the neighbors is lighting.
Sure.
Dumpsters, I mean, they're going to be worried about their quality of life being affected by any kind of commercial development to their property.
Sure, sure, understandably.
Be mindful of whatever that best use is at highest is to protect those neighbors.
No, and hearing that there were concerns about lighting and sounds and things, that's part of the reason why we said, okay, maybe the opaque wall is something that may provide more benefit, because it would be an actual, you know, more of a substantial barrier between those things. But, you know, I suspect that these are going to be similar things that the property across the street will have, you know, that everything's going to be compliant with the city's regulations on dumpster enclosures and grease traps and everything like that. So we do plan to comply by those buffer rules, though, to create as much separation as practically possible.
And also, something to think about is also on lot three, the noise factor too, whatever you plan to develop in terms of loading late at night, things like that.
Absolutely.
Consider that for the neighbors.
Sure.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No one has signed up to speak for or against, but did have some public comments that they are in the record. Would anyone care to speak for or against this proposal? Having heard none, we'll close. Anyone have any comments before we take a vote?
I did, I did have one question, and I just thought about it. Has the petitioner met with the residents in the area?
No, no, we have not, but we actually just became aware of any comments earlier today. So that's where the first we've heard that there might be some sort of public opositions at that time.
Staff, can we obviously get those comments to the petitioner?
Yeah, we forwarded, just like we forwarded them to you guys, we'll forward them to him as well.
Zach, one of the letters stated that they had not gotten notice. Did we confirm that they did?
So we notify every adjacent property owner, and then this one actually would get a lot because you're doing all three, so within 500 feet of this location.
They were not required.
So within 500 feet, we are required. So within 500 feet of this location, they should have gotten it, but if not, if they're outside of that, then they would not have received a letter.
Did we confirm that this person was out inside? Did you look at it?
We haven't confirmed. We can look, but we're, I mean, we're fairly certain. We follow all the rules and regulations.
You keep a record, you send a certified mail, right?
Yes, sir.
You keep a, you've got a record.
Certified mail for the subdivision, which would just be adjacent property owners.
Just adjacent, okay. So there, people across the street from the adjacent properties would not get it.
They would not get certified mailings, but they would have received mailings within the 500 feet.
Zach, what if you're within 500 feet, but you're not adjacent?
But you're not what?
Adjacent.
If you're within 500 feet, you would have received a letter related to the rezoning petition.
The 500 feet is a local requirement. Do internally, it's not required by state law.
Yep.
Is that from the property line of the proposal?
Yep.
That's our requirement, a city requirement, not a state.
That's right.
Well, obviously you got those. We would strongly encourage you to just keep them in the loop of what you're doing.
Sure.
I mean.
Two out of three of the addresses that were specified on the emails did not get mailings because they were outside of that buffer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? You know, I guess as we know, this isn't accounted currently. He could do a lot of things without it coming into the city. He's, I think, making the right decision to come into the city, and we got more stringent requirements in the BN zoning. We know we're going to get there, so I think, you know, I said to somebody earlier, 20 years ago, Highway 69 was a two-lane highway, and there was a lot of property between that front line and where it is now. So it's obviously, we made the decision years ago that it's obviously more of a higher, better use from a commercial standpoint. So I think with the buffering and the developer's willingness to be a good neighbor, that he'll do his best he can to protect the adjoining neighbors, so those are my comments on it.
Okay, so the city's agreement years back to allow all the Hinton Place property to have sewer access but stay in the county does not pertain to this property? How do they know where it ends? And also, does it ever expire?
So what's on Highway, in this area is called the sewer exception district. I can't remember exactly when it was initiated, but it had to have been in the late 80s. That policy allowed for residential development to connect to the city sewer system without annexing into the city. When sewers extended in that area, there were some commercial areas that were connected, but in, he may know the year, probably '07, I think, something like that, our ordinance changed, and now any commercial development has to annex to connect to the sewer. And there's not an expiration date on the sewer exception district. The wording is general in such a term that when the capacity of the system is reached...
I thought back in those days, you had to have a platted subdivision at the time. You can't go plat one now and do it again. I mean, it had to be platted at that time, didn't it? In other words, you were kind of grandfathered in, I thought. If you had a platted subdivision, you could be on our sewer and not be in the city, but I don't think you can go plat a piece of raw land now and do it.
If you're in the exception area, you can plat one. There's very little land left to development, so it didn't seem like there was any reason to close.
You got just a few more phases that within that district that can be developed.
It's almost...
All of them are phase two and three of some PUD, so.
I could have said this, but what if you do, and we're getting to a point where some of those are redeveloped? Is that, is that any redevelopment?
Redevelopment is not addressed in the sewer exception district. I think a redevelopment that increased density, then the question will become, at what point do we reach the capacity of the system?
That's a conversation.
Yes, sir, sure is.
Okay, let me ask you this, just, you know, when you talk about capacity. Because I don't have any idea how many lots could, you know, if the owner wanted to, he could develop this as residential, and it would come within that exception. He could hook on to the sewer system and remain in the county, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't know how many lots could go in a 3.3-acre plot, but will commercial property have a greater impact on our sewer system than residential?
I'm going to say generally not.
Okay.
They're not as big a water customer as a residential home or an apartment complex, washers and dryers, and kitchens, and so on and so forth. Now, these fast food restaurants will have some, but, you know, generally not.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, having heard none. Commission before us, we have three items on this companion case, the first being annexation 1923, annexing 3.3 acres located in 9601 Highway 69 South. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion to approve. Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission, we have for Z-2223, Mr. Watkins petition to rezone approximately 3.3 acres from R1 to BN. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
I really don't want to, but I have to vote yes. I wouldn't want to live next to a fast food restaurant.
Yes.
Or two.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission, we have for S-8423, the Watkins subdivision, one variance request, lot configuration. A motion and a second.
Motion, second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission, we have for S-8423, the Watkins subdivision, one variance request, lot configuration. A motion and a second.
Motion, second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Next up, we have companion case B. This will be a rezoning and a subdivision. We'll begin with the rezoning. We have Z-2323. Kevin Hinkle is petitioning to rezone approximately .3 acres, and this is located at 625 Queen City Avenue from R4 to R3. This is in Council District 4. Here's the vicinity map. It's just at the corner of Queen City Avenue and 7th. You all saw a subdivision come through just two months ago. And here's the aerial overview. The property today is R4. They're requesting to rezone to R3, which they are matched with to the south and the west, or east. Here's that property. And to the west, the top picture is from Audubon Place. It's in the cul-de-sac, and then that is the rear of their property, right next to the remainder of this lot. And then to the north, you have a single-family home. And then this rezoning request is to allow for less dense zoning to better protect the historical neighborhood. This does conform to framework. Framework identified this as traditional neighborhood core, which is single-family. It can range with a few multifamily components. And the future land use character map matching the pattern of this side of Queen City. Any questions on the rezoning before we jump into the subdivision? All right. We have S-8523, Foster House and 20 Audubon. This is a resurvey of part of Lot 9 of University Survey, and all of Lot 20 of Audubon Place. This is a reconfiguration of two existing lots, and this is on approximately .53 acres, again, at 625 Queen City, as well as 20 Audubon. Here's that vicinity. We're in the same area. And as I just stated, this is a reconfiguration. Previously, you saw this as a two-lot subdivision. Now, they are taking 20 Audubon. I'll draw in here a little bit, too. This lot line currently exists. This is the existing parcel today. So they are requesting to remove this line for 20 Audubon and add this portion, leaving 625 on its own lot here. So there will be no vacant property left, and they're requesting right-of-way dedication, a variance from right-of-way dedication along 7th, and they're also requesting a variance from lot configuration.
Engineering, any... We're good, thank you. Any questions for staff? Petitioner.
Kevin Hinkle with Montgomery &amp; Hinkle, Inc., professional land surveyors, 203 Hager Road East, representing the petitioner for the rezone. When it was before, it was going to be R4. Now we're going with R3. That'll better protect the neighborhood, and I think it addresses many of the neighbors' concerns also. Any questions?
Any questions for petitioner? No, sir. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, we'll close. I applaud the petitioner's efforts here. I think we accomplished what we all really wanted to do, was protect that piece of property, so I appreciate that. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, having heard none. Commission before us, we have Z-2323, request to rezone the .3 acres from R4 to R3. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Mission S-8523, Foster House, reconfiguration of the lot with two variance requests. Engineering has some issues with it. Do I have a motion and a second?
May we approve?
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Jumping into our preliminary plats of the evening, we'll start with S-8823. This is the Lakewood Estates subdivision. It's consisting of two lots on approximately 10.9 acres, located directly south of 11562 Turner Road. This is not in city limits. We are very far north. I believe it's Crimson Shore subdivision that this is next to. Here's an aerial overview of the property we're looking at. They're wanting to go from one lot to two. Here's that plat without contours. They're requesting a variance from the drainage study, public street frontage, as well as capped sewer. They are accessing through an easement that they have shown here. They are accessing through an easement that they have shown here. Do you have any questions for staff on this?
On the variance request, engineering?
We support those requests.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Petitioner?
Good evening, uh, my name is Ray Hall, but ninety-six thirty-three Martin Farms Drive. I am the owner of, uh, this property. Uh, staff did a great job of laying out the subdivision. Really goes in line, what I think would be great for this is, uh, low-density second-home development. Uh, one small house per five acres, uh, very low impact, uh, and for, and for privacy, so. Any questions for that?
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have plat S-eighty-eight-twenty-three, the Lakewood Estates subdivision. Three variance requests, engineering is, has no issues with, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next up, we have S-eighty-nine-twenty-three. This is the resurvey of Lot One of the Ronnie Hamner subdivision. It's consisting of two lots on approximately three-point-six-five acres, located at one-two-one-nine-eight Lake Nickel Road. This is not in city limits. Here is the vicinity map. And here is the aerial overview. You all saw the subdivision, it was a two-lot subdivision back in April of this year, so they've come to split one of those lots into two. Here's the plat with contours and without. They're putting each building on its own lot. There's also a house existing on Lot Two-R that they have shown, and they're requesting variances from sidewalks as well as capped sewer.
Engineering?
We support those.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I, my name is Gilbert Centel, with Centel Engineering, representing Mr. Hamner on the show field. There's two existing houses on this piece of property now, and what they wish to do is divide those two to two individual pieces of property. And, uh, other than that, that's pretty much it. But there's a barn on one of the, that Lot Two-R, and, uh, existing houses on both of them.
It's pretty cut and dry.
Pretty simple.
Yep, I like simple. Anyone care to ask petitioner any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, mission before us, we have S-eighty-nine-twenty-three, the Ronnie Hamner subdivision, two-lot subdivision with two variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
Next up, we have S-ninety-twenty-three. This is the McCraw Lake. It's consisting of two lots on approximately six-point-eight-nine acres. This is located at nine-fifty-five Kennedy Mill Road, and this is not in city limits. Here's a vicinity map. We're right at the old Birmingham Highway and Kennedy Mill Road split, just a little further up Kennedy Mill. Here's an aerial overview of the property. Here's that plat with contours and without. So we're going from one lot to two, putting that home and lake on its own separate lot. And they're requesting variances from sidewalks, half-street improvements, as well as capped sewer.
Engineering?
We support those requests.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Kevin Hinkle with Montgomery and Hinkle, Inc., professional land surveyors, two-oh-three Hager Road East, representing the petitioner, who wishes to separate the house and the lake to its own separate lot and protect the dam and spillway to go with that lake lot. That's the reason for that lot configuration you see there.
Noticing that with the dam being on Lot One.
Mm-hmm. They wanted to have control of the dam and spillway to, rather than it be on someone else's lot.
Kind of interesting with, uh, what happens like if the dam breaks? Who's, I mean, obviously it's on, the dam's on his property. See, isn't it? It is now, yeah. Mike, you guys are going to look on you.
Well, I, I was going to ask the petitioner a question, but I think the, the dam break is more of a legal issue, but obviously that, you know, my thoughts are if the dam breaks and there's downstream property damage, then somebody's liable for that. My question relates to the right-of-way that's there today. Are y'all dedicating any right-of-way? It's unclear on your drawing. This...
There's a, already a private easement that runs across the dam to access the property?
I'm talking about on Kennedy Mill Road. This is in the county, and the, the county requires sixty feet of right-of-way when you have an un, a cur, a street without curb and gutter. You show thirty feet on your side, but your, your center line is unclear as to whether or not that's the center of the paving. Are you, are you meeting the county's requirements for thirty feet from center line?
Yes, that is, that is the goal of that.
If it's a fifty-foot right-of-way today.
Right.
You chose to show the right-of-way center line with twenty on one side and thirty on the other.
I would like to say... I would like to say that, uh, I remember Marty addressing those issues, and I had thought that they had sent in a revised drawing to display that. That is my under, understanding.
Well, I just caution you, maybe when the final plat is presented, the county may question whether or not they're getting their right-of-way based on what their regulations are.
Totally agree. And I can see that the way that's drawn, it was the intent. There might be some number errors, so to speak, from a drafting standpoint. But, uh, most definitely that would be addressed on the final plat to display thirty foot from center line of the road.
On that final plat, obviously we look at it. County's got to look at it as well, right?
Yes, sir, we, we will review it as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll concur, you know, the county will have the final authority, but we'll, we'll...
Y'all are okay with we thinking we got to get this numerically?
Yeah, but yeah, based on this plat, the intent is that this developer is giving thirty feet from center line.
Right, right.
So that's, that's the way I would interpret that.
And that's the side we got to worry about, petitioner's.
That is correct, yes, sir.
I mean, development to the, whatever direction that would be, that's, in future development, they got to get ten more.
That's right, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So you good, Mr.?
I'm good.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard or seen none, commission before us, we have S-ninety-twenty-three McCraw Lake, two-lot subdivision with three variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, commission, we do have one street vacation request. It's V-oh-five-twenty-three. This is to vacate a portion of Thirtieth Avenue, Fourth Street, and Fifth Street. These are all portions of these streets. Uh, this is in Council District One. Here's an aerial overview. We're at thirty-fourteen Fifth, Fifth Street. And here's that aerial image. And shaded is the requested vacation. This subdivision came to you all back in September. This was S-fifty-six, the Fifth Street subdivision, with four town home lots facing MLK. Uh, you all did vote to approve that contingent on a successful street vacation, so that vacation is before you all this evening. Um, talking with other city departments, there were no issues, but we are going back and forth a little bit with Alabama Power to, um, work out some easement location.
Any questions of staff? Anyone care to speak for or against this vacation request? Having heard none, commission before us, vacation request zero-file-twenty-three, vacating a portion of thirty-seventy-fourth Street and Fifth Street. Have, all, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, and then just really quick, our upcoming meetings, we have a special called Framework Meeting on Wednesday, January third. And our next time, we'll have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be Wednesday, January seventeenth. So we will have a Wednesday meeting rather than a Monday, just to remind you all, but that's all we have for this year.
There's a call of meeting on January the third.
That's right, we'll see you here, hopefully. Hopefully.
You got one full day to recuperate.
I heard that we're giving out prizes that day.
Anything else? Commission?
Mary Christmas.
We are, we have Mary Christmas, happy holidays, meetings adjourned.